The meeting is called to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parzak?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape McCounty Herald on January 8th, 2017. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is I'd like to ask Bridget Ruskey to come on up. And I've been so impressed by your athletic career over the last four years. Totally enjoyed following you. I'm sure a lot of people share the sentiment. So what we would like to do, since you're our hometown girl, we would just like to give you a proclamation from this governing body and just to publicly mark this occasion as your excellence, your discipline, your hard work. Everything is just so impressive. And to be your, you know, you're one of us. You're Stone Harbor, born and raised, and this girl has the state record for lacrosse goals, the state record. I mean, truly remarkable. Your accomplishments are truly remarkable. So what I just, for anybody here who does not know some of Bridget's background, her parents are here, Doctors Beth and John Ruskey, they're back there. If you'd like to come up, you're welcome to, if you'd like to sit back there, whatever you want to do. But Bridget earned 12 varsity letters through her four years at middle township, playing soccer, basketball, and lacrosse. Soccer, she pretty much played every position correct, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of my information. When you Google Bridget, you get a lot of information. I'll tell you that. Basketball, she was a point guard, averaged 13 points, 5.6 rebounds, 2.4 assists, and is a 1,000-point scorer. And then there's lacrosse. She ended her four-year career with 485 goals and now holds the state record for goals scored in the sport. And Bridget will continue to represent Stone Harbor in the sport of lacrosse where she earned a scholarship to NCAA Division One La Salle University where she's going to play lacrosse. And if that's not enough, she also is a member of the National Honor Society, considering a double major in international business and communications. But I just think that it's, we need to acknowledge our people when we do well, and you just, you're phenomenal. You'll be an inspiration to other, you know, kids, other athletes, both boys and girls, to work hard and, you know, from small town, Stone Harbor comes the best in the state. Good work. So we have a proclamation, oh, just one. So we've got the proclamation, and then the other thing that I'm going to give you is, in Stone Harbor, you don't get a key to the city, you get your own water tower. That's what you get. So I would just like this water tower to kind of follow you throughout your life, wherever. It can always stick it somewhere. And remember Stone Harbor, you can remember all the good things about Stone Harbor, wonderful community, family, everything. And you can always just stash it somewhere. So I'm going to give you a water tower and a proclamation.
So anybody want to get into picture with me or allow?
We'll let you do the honors.
I'm telling you honestly, I would follow your care, and I would text your logo.
Yeah.
So your eyes were all very smart.
Thank you. Congratulations.
When I went to college 37 years ago, there was nothing like when I would be coming home and hit Avalon Boulevard. And you knew you were coming home, and you're, you know, you're a kid, you know you're coming home. So hopefully, that's going to be how Bridget feels when she hits Stone Harbor Boulevard and when she comes home. It's like, yay, I'm home, you pass all those very familiar landmarks. But best of luck to you. And with that, may I have a motion concerning the minutes?
Madam Mayor, since all members of council have been provided with a copy of the minutes of the work session and the meeting of June 15th, 2017, and the work session and meeting of July 3rd, 2017, if there are no additions or corrections, I move we dispense with the reading of the minutes and that they be approved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This time we'll have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record. We'll close the public portion. Ordinance 1501.
Yes, I have that. I'd like to make a motion that ordinance 1501 be taken up for the second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1501 on second reading?
The ordinance amending chapter 386 Parking Lots Municipal of the Revised General Ordinances.
The public hearing on ordinance 1501 is open? The public hearing is closed?
I'd like to move that 1501 be passed on second reading, advanced to third and final reading.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1501 on third and final reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 386 Municipal Parking Lots.
I'd like to move that ordinance 1501 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Ordinance 1502.
Madam Mayor, I offer, I ask that ordinance 1502 be taken up on first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1502 on first reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 10 of the general ordinances of the borough of Stone Harbor, specifically article 10 dash 4.
Madam Mayor, I ask that ordinance 1502 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that it be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adopted at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on June 15th, on the 15th day of August, 2017.
Second.
Judy, may I have some discussion or something to say about that?
Yeah, there's no discussion part in here.
That's because it's only discussion on second.
Okay. So no, there's no discussion at this point, just the second. We call the roll.
Call the roll.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich? Yes. Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 163.
Uh-oh, it's me. Turning the page a little slow. We have plenty of time. I offer resolution 2017 S. 163 for adoption.
Second.
Second.
This is the cancellation of the money that was, that we were granted a long time ago for Site 103 for Nummy Island from the DOT. It's giving it back.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 164.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2017 S. 164 for adoption.
Second.
This is over a three-year project. We're applying again for an ADA grant to redo, reconstruct, and remodel the ADA compliant bathrooms at the water tower.
Any discussion?
Well, I have a comment. I'm reading where it says, the first paragraph, "to remove architectural barriers by providing handicapped accessible beachfront access and bathrooms in order to comply with American Disabilities Act."
Yes, that's for reconstruction of the north end ADA compliant ramps that we haven't gotten to.
It's a combination.
That is included in the, in the grant.
In the grant.
What else is included?
The bathrooms?
The curbing, some of the crossovers from one side of the street to the other that we have not changed over to ADA compliant. About 10 or 15 of them that have to be done. Ramps usually cost us within $60,000.
It's all the same projects that we had applied for.
Previously.
We're just, we're basically.
I just didn't see where it said water work in here. That didn't bring a bill with me.
Any more discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 165.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2017 S. 165 for adoption.
Second.
And this allows the borough to be an applicant for Department of Community Affairs fiscal year funds.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 166.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer resolution number 2017 dash S dash 166 for adoption.
Second.
This, this resolution, if I, if I read these properly, is a follow-on to the last two resolutions, and this enabled, or this just recognizes the borough's grant management plan, which has been written in accordance with the state requirements and then.
These four, all these four are grouped together, go along with the grant.
Correct.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 167.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2017 S. 167 for adoption.
Second.
This is for the fiscal year 2018 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, and Mike Cootenberry, the construction official, shall be designated as the Fair Housing Officer.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 168.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2017 S. 168 for adoption.
Second.
This resolution authorizes the borough to refund $1,500 to asphalt paving system, which represents a fire hydrant meter rental deposit.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 169.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2017 S. 169 for adoption.
Second.
This also is a $1,500 hydrant meter rental deposit to be refunded to Lenburg Construction.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 170.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2017 S. 170 for adoption.
Second.
This is a contract we're running into with the Cranford Police Cooperative Pricing System, and it's to purchase a 2016 Chevy Tahoe for $34,300.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 171.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2017 S. 171 for adoption.
Second.
This is amending our cash management plan. This will allow our CFO to make direct deposits to vendors instead of having to write a check just the way we probably all do, pay on our bank, and it's sent automatically. That's what he'll be able to do with certain vendors.
Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 172.
Before I introduce that, I have a word that I really want to see changed in that. And I know we hashed it out at our last meeting, but we're all adults. We all took an oath for this office. We volunteered, although we do get received a stipend, we volunteered for this position, and we took an oath stating that we would, we are committed to doing the best for Stone Harbor in short words. I think the word attempt to attend should be stricken. I think we should attend. Listen to me out, please. When a meeting is scheduled, and we're down to four meetings a year now, if you can't make that meeting, all you have to do is call the chair and say, listen, can we reschedule it? And it can be rescheduled. There is no penalty in here, but I do think that as adults and people who are supposedly dedicated to the borough and to the well-being of the borough to say, well, you should attempt to attend a meeting, or maybe don't attend if you don't want to, I think, I think that's an insult. So I would like to see the word attempt stricken, and I would like to hear from the rest of council what you feel before I introduce that resolution.
Well, I have.
Should we just pull it? I have something I'd like to add to that now. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Davies for her comments at the last meeting proposing the ordinance and the closed sessions and the work sessions. And for the past seven and a half years, as Chair of Public Works, we met each month except for July and August, and because of the hectic schedule of PW, we didn't have meetings those few months, and I met with the Administrator and Director of Public Works to keep into the loop. As Mayor Davies said, there's a gray area when it was proposed that we no longer have monthly meetings. Instead, we have a work session. I disagreed and voted no because I knew we could not eliminate regular meetings in their entirety. Meetings were again added along with the work sessions. Schedules vary. In the past, we always worked rescheduling the meetings to support everyone. Some had other jobs, whatever it was, we, we worked along with it. To suggest that some people, council people, are derelict in performing their duties because they do not attend a meeting is absurd. Minutes are distributed to all of council to be read and for all the council members to be kept up to date. We are aware of the three-meeting ruling, which basically was for people that went on vacation. I don't believe anyone intentionally misses a work session or a regular meeting unless they are physically not able, or they have vacation plans, or a family matter. If you feel compelled to put these rules and regulations, it should be known and put in place for any new regimes that are being voted in. We were all elected by the people of our town to do the best job possible. We each do that in our own way. We certainly do not need to be a clone council. We do not need to be criticized how we handle our responsibilities. I'm sure we all think maybe someone should, or would, or could have handled a situation differently than we did. I personally do not think we have to be monitored constantly by others who believe their way of interpretation or performing is the right way. So with that being said, I don't think we need to put attempt in there.
Well, first of all, this is about, this resolution is only for standing committee meetings. We already passed the one which just.
And I know you did.
But, but it didn't do anything more than add work sessions. That ordinance was on the books for years about the attendance at regular meetings.
That's just what I said.
This just added that. But this is strictly for the standing committee meetings, and I would just like to remove the word attempt. And I think we could pass it with that attempt if other people agree.
I'm always open to change, and I think that each and every committee here is a little bit different. I sit on public safety, and it runs completely different because of the structure. There are people for every department, and really, all you do is you sit and you listen to all the good things that they're doing. I sat on BRT. That's intense. What I'm trying to get at is that I, I believe, and I will continue to believe, that a meeting a month, at least for Natural Resources, kept us moving forward on big projects, kept us going, it kept us moving. The idea of four, going from 12 to four, and then saying attempt to attend offends me because I care enough to make those four meetings. And, and we are adults, as I think Karen said. Me as chair now at Natural Resource, I will let the people on Natural Resource know long in advance as to when those four meetings are going to be. If for some reason someone is not going to be able to attend them, and Joan, you haven't attended one in all of 2017, not one.
That's correct.
Not one.
For Natural Resources, and there's a good reason for it?
And I don't need to know.
And I will not publicly say why.
Thank you for sparing me. My point, my point is, four meetings isn't going to be enough, in my humble opinion, for what Natural Resources has to do. And when you and Karen and I sat on utilities, that monthly meetings for the utilities got the utilities moving forward faster than anything else I think that we did as far as water conservation. So I, I honestly still believe that a meeting a month is what I, I think we might need, or a meeting every other month. And if you can't, if you can't agree as a council member to make four meetings instead of the 12, I have a, I just don't get it. I just don't get it. I think we, we are elected to show up, we are elected to spend our time, all of us have lives, but if you're given four meetings for 2018 and you can't make them, then there's a problem.
And if you'd like to look at my record for the last seven and a half years, I've probably attended more meetings than almost anyone.
Let's just move on to Ray.
I, I agree. Say all members should attend a minimum of three standing committee meetings.
Three or four.
This says three.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for four.
Minimum of three, it does say three, should say four. Charles?
You know, I see both sides of this, and without getting into the particulars that we, we kind of just dealt into.
Can you talk into your microphone?
I think there's something to be said for the fact that, you know, voters voted somebody in, if they do a lousy job, it's really up to the voters to decide to vote them out of office. That being said, I, I completely agree, four meetings, everyone should be able to attend at least three of those, or really four, if we're paring it down this far. So I really don't have a strong opinion either way. I feel like my responsibility to this office will, will take me well above and beyond any mandated minimums. So that being said, I'm fine with removing the word attempt.
If you realize.
Mentor.
We're not making this for necessarily us. This is just as we accepted the ordinances that were put in years ago about attending council meetings. This is for the future. This is for anyone new coming on. And if it says, oh, well, you should attempt, so that means I don't really have to, I can make an attempt.
Mentor.
I think that everyone needs to realize that each one of our committees is an important one, but very distinct from the other. Each one of them has different requirements in order to be able to function. As a personal experience with BRT, we're not meeting during June and July because Miranda is full speed ahead. She's eight in the morning till eight at night, and that's what we need there. But we have her all set up from our previous meetings that we did conduct before her heavy season started. Now in August, immediately after her Arts and Crafts Festival, we're going to take it from there. And I believe that if we're going to be able to help her, to be able to create all of the activities for the upcoming end-of-the-year season, we all need to be there to be able to give our two cents, to give her some direction. And I take it as a form of disrespect when someone doesn't want to come to a meeting just because he or she doesn't want to come. I think that if someone wants to come, if someone is assigned to that committee, it's part of their responsibility to attend, not attempt to attend. Attempting to attend, to me, means that person had every intention of attending, and then it rained. So now he or she is not going to attend. So I expect, if I'm scheduling a meeting and I give people some flexibility and say, this is the date, and it's a week in advance, and I don't hear that someone cannot come, I'm assuming all three of us will be there. And I think that in order for us to fulfill the duties that we accepted as council people, no matter whether it's four meetings a year or 12 meetings a year, whatever it is that is dictated by the borough, I think that each person has a responsibility to his or her job to attend.
Let me see, Mike.
Responsibility is correct, but you don't know all the parameters of what has gone on this past year. I'm not getting into it publicly. I would never do that. I would never do that. So you can't blank, just draw a blanket statement that should be attempt, or that this person should do that.
I would be comfortable with, there'll be four standing committees per year, and go right to the borough administrator after consultation, has additional meetings. I believe it's implied you should attempt to attend a minimum of the meetings, and I still say that the voter, there, there's no penalty in here, so I kind of don't even understand where it goes. So if it says, so if somebody doesn't, there's no penalty.
There's no penalty. But if anyone reading this says they should attend, then it is more of an onus on you to get to that meeting. If you say attempt to attend, it's, well, I can attempt, but I don't.
So there is no, but there is no penalty, so.
Well, literally.
There is no penalty, so.
Literally, there cannot be a penalty.
Right.
My correct, yes, there cannot be a penalty. So it's just your word that you want to put in there.
So it's just the word, right, so, I mean.
Just strike the word attempt.
Here's, we could do all the, all the meetings, we could do all committee meetings publicly.
I'm not interested in that.
I'm not sure why.
Why?
Because that seems to be where the preliminary work is done so that we can do the real work here.
Which I got out of the realm of where we were going with this resolution anyway. But I'm just saying that I just feel the more public, the better, the more meetings behind closed doors, the worse. I just would like to, I'd like to see Jill have more control over meetings and, and so on and so forth with department heads and us starting to, you know, I just sometimes feel there might be a little bit of micromanagement going on, and I just would like to see our
department heads interacting with Jill and getting their jobs done. And I would like to see the four standing meetings, then we have workshops, and we have council meetings. We have, I feel like there's plenty of time to get things done in this format.
Well, I think, I think we're there, aren't we? Just take out "attempt," and let's move on.
Right, take out "attempt," and that's it. Okay. All we have to do.
And at our last... Should attend. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, the votes are there, so there's not much, you know.
At the last Natural Resource meeting that we had, before the meeting was over, Jill asked to schedule another meeting, and we scheduled it.
Good.
Because she knows we're going to need it. So it's working.
Okay.
But I don't, I do think that everyone here should attend four of the meetings a year, and that's it. Changing the subject a little bit because of the first, or the first ordinance that was brought up about, about whatever it was, attendance and...
The workshops and the council meetings, the ordinance change.
Yes, and the, and the three consecutive...
Right.
No council member can miss more than three consecutive meetings. Well, you know, you can play that game if you want to, and that was done 25, 30 years ago for a reason, those three consecutive, and I remember it when I was here before. But there's nothing to say except the us. You could miss a council meeting a month.
But that's never been done.
But what, I'm... That doesn't mean it can't be done. You just can't miss three in a row.
You're trying to scrutinize and, and...
No, I'm not. I'm trying to set an example.
Somebody's reputation.
Well, set, I think that we're going off course. So what we're going to do is, we're going to introduce the resolution, but we're going to remove the word "attempt."
Attempt.
So we need a, so do we need a whole new resolution?
We need a motion as amended.
Okay.
As amended.
So we need a motion to adopt resolution, what number were we on? 2017?
172.
172, as amended. Removing the word "attempt."
Do we introduce it first and then make the motion, or how do we do that?
Somebody needs to make a motion, and then have a roll call motion.
Because we already introduced...
I didn't introduce it.
Oh, it wasn't introduced?
We didn't do that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Before I introduced it, I brought up the discussion.
Yeah, we never started it.
Okay, so we need a motion to change the language in the resolution first.
Before we introduce it.
Right.
Okay.
So we need that motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we change the language in resolution 2017 S. 172 and remove the word "attempt." Two.
Second.
Attempt two. Attempt two.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so now, resolution 2017 S. 172.
As amended.
As amended.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2017 S. 172 as amended.
Second.
Any more discussion?
No, Madam Mayor.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S. 173.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2017 S. 173 for adoption.
Second.
This is the executive policy manual that formalizes the procedure for borough work sessions.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.